We're giving you to a roll each year.
Okay, is it can I sit in this one? I'm good, thank you.
Share, I'm just gonna share that deal points and we can just. Customize that as we follow.
It's six oh one. At this time, we this is a city council work session and we will call it order at six oh one. A roll call, please.
Here. That's the number here. Number one on our.
Here.
And so the comment here. Mayor President Green. Man, I'm not.
Here. Excellent, thank you very much. At this time, we have the optional pledge allegiance or moment of silence. Thank you. Approval of the agenda is this in is there anything that anybody would like to add to lead change?
I think the only thing mayor you and I talked about is just letting the council know the updated budget work schedule. And towards the end of the meeting, maybe before we adjourn, we can pass out the schedule with a couple of additions.
I have it right here.
Okay, that's it, that's the only thing I can think of.
Yes, I don't think we need to change for that, so. I don't think we're gonna take a vote on that housekeeping event, anything you'd like to talk about. Okay, thank you very much. Public comments about items not on the agenda. Everybody in the public would like to speak, actually, it could be items on the agenda. It's a work session, so I don't really concern myself with that. Luke, you're the only public.
Glad to be here.
All right, good, glad to hear. Okay, this time we have a presentation from level seven.
All right, and I told the level seven group that I would just just quickly introduce why we're here tonight and then give them as much time as possible and turn the floor over to them. But we last, where we last left this was the level seven group came to city council and gave a presentation. And asked if the council will be interested in scheduling a work session to discuss potential annexation of this property. And so that's why we are here, so without further ado, I'll turn it over to Kyle and feel free to introduce anybody on the team.
Thank you, Chapin. Hi, everyone, Kyle Lynch, DTJ Design, we met briefly a few weeks ago for the ten minute presentation. Here with a few more members of the DTJ design team as well as the development team.
Brian Rickman, Principal of DTJ Design.
I'm Bob Armstrong, one of the level seven members and development acting and development manager for the partnership.
And I'm Joseph San Martino, I'm Senior Architect at DTJ Design. And I'm nine, you want to mention Kyle recently done?
Yes, Chris, are you with us?
Yes, good evening, Chris Durle, I'm with Tetra Tech Civil Engineer with the project team.
And Kelly, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here, Kelly Rabby with Consolidated Housing Solutions out of Kansas City Portable Housing Developer, so I'm just on to. Opine and provide commentary and support when needed.
Okay, great, thank you, everyone, for this opportunity. First thing I'd like to do is just cover the goals of what we would like to get out of tonight's work session and see if there's anything that we've missed or anything additional. We should be shooting for, so we'd like to briefly update you on our plan. Changes that have been made since the last time we spoke, understand what the development goals are as well as the city goals. And begin to identify agreement points for how to move forward.
Yeah, I think the only thing I'd add to is we love these work sessions to be a dialogues, we have lots of things to share, not big folks on, but we want to hear your feedback and whether it be a rolling conversation. Don't want to be a presentation response, we would love to hear your thoughts as Kyle in the future.
Okay, and as we go through this, we we want to pay specific attention to the questions you had in the ten minute presentation addressing. Traffic soils, trails and housing, we have begun to look into each of those a bit more, understanding that there's only so many answers we can get before. Getting further into the project. So one of those being. Excuse me, one of those being traffic. We. We have reached out to C dot about the twelfth street extension. We began initial coordination with them and they've confirmed that. They're not really, they're going to defer to the traffic study and city. Coordination, they don't have any specific requirements outside of what's going to be required out of a traffic study for this development.
And beyond that, I mean, there was some brief dialogue about the current condition, right? May you share a little bit about that?
So it was pointed out that the. Twelfth Street and highway intersection would likely need to be improved, they said that that is currently. Substandard. And we did not get into much more detail than that, other than at some point, any additional traffic on twelfth street would need. Improvements, it already needs improvements and then I'm I'm. Not quite sure what coordination effort between the city, county and state look like at the moment for for that intersection. I have questions on that, but I'll I'll defer to council at this point in time.
Was the traffic study already been done?
No. Not not with our not with our side, I'm not sure if there's a graphic study done with the rail yard or any kind of.
There were a couple. Yeah, I would say what was interesting about the traffic study from railroad and their interface with C dot. Were the acceleration and deceleration lanes that were required, so that's. That would be something that that C dot required of them. In terms of of making their ingress egress onto the highway work.
Yep, and that was the primary point was the southbound decelerating turn east on the twelve. So we recognize that's something that lives out there even today and will likely. Have to be addressed around this time of this development, again, the traffic study would come along with a more firm understanding of the plan, obviously, we'll get into that.
The other thing they've required that probably won't apply to you at all was they required the up upgrading of the intersection at Mountain View. And Highway twenty four, which it was well over a million dollars. Just to upgrade that that intersection with new lights and. And then acceleration and deceleration lanes there as well, so. Anyway, that was that was C dot's call entirely, but we had to adhere to it.
Okay, so that that was the main point that came out of the C dot conversation is that they would not require anything other than. What the traffic study dictated, which would come up at a further point of the development and subdivision application process.
Chapin, did you have any other comments?
You you mentioned improvements to the intersection, was that was that? Well, did they did they mention what kind of improvements those were, were they were? Acceleration, deceleration lanes or kind of access control?
So the only the only comment we got was on the specifically in the decelerating on that southbound direction. Don't recall anything, Kyle, that they mentioned on the acceleration or signal improvements.
Okay.
Now, I don't know what the agreement was with with the rail yards development, if there's anything that they're still on the hook for in terms of. You know, monitoring contribution or how that plays out, but we want to make sure that, you know, the level seventeen wouldn't be obligated for something that would be on the hook by others, but. Again, that's a deal point that we concerned with work towards.
And and that was not in response to our development, that was just a point that they identified that currently needs to be addressed based on current conditions. So. That was our largest point of off site. Traffic regarding. Current yield project projections and traffic. What we've done is we've added a multifamily affordable housing site to PA one, the bottom right corner off of CR three. And we've done this for a few reasons, that land is the most conducive piece for a multifamily building. It was in a location that. We could get some vertical development without having conflict between extending the city grid that allows us to. Keep these future PAs twos and threes in some kind of a form that can respond to. Singular attached family housing and it puts. A bulk of the traffic directly onto CR three and keeps the multifamily traffic out of the local streets, eleventh, twelfth.
When the traffic goes on County Road three, which is seventh street, then where does it go?
I mean, I would anticipate heading.
Oh, I understand that setup, you know, seventh street is doesn't go to a light, doesn't go to an intersection, I mean, it go, you know, you. You know, that just just thought, I mean, seventh street strikes me as a problem once you get down all the way to the highway.
So one of the things that will come up in the traffic report is. What are the other assumptions, particularly at the grid in between the city where it's at and and this property? What could fill out what's anticipated even in the near future? So I know, you know, Bob, if you want to speak on this, I know there's been some talk with the adjacent owners and. What update with council where those conversations are at, because that may impact. The future growth of the city and ultimately the transportation traffic.
Yeah, we reached out to a couple of them and. You know, very interested in working with us, talking to us, I mean, quite honestly. And we'll continue that process and working with acquiring traditional land and what have you, but. Don't want to make those steps till we make sure they are bad for.
Got you, okay. Another quick question, how many acres do you have associated with? With the housing off of County Road three?
It's a two point nine acre tract of about which only two percent of that is flat enough to feasibly develop.
When you say two percent.
So it's it's, I'm sorry, two thirds of that is developable for the topography, so that's what we're seeing in.
Would the other was the other third? Be possible parking or is it that hill?
It's primarily the hillside and transitional into the hillside. Obviously, the goal with any type of development there, typically in affordable housing standpoint is to keep those costs limited, so the development cost. We're we're trying to avoid using things like structural retaining walls that just will burden that development.
Good. When we're talking about affordable housing, I mean, I don't know if it's gotten this far, are we talking light tech affordable, are we talking? Middle income affordable, are we talking and affordable?
My opinion is what is being discussed at this point.
Okay. And that's appeasing, though I had concerns with. You know, it not. Spurst out through other the rest of the development, I think having a light tech project would somewhat make up for that as something that. Obviously, we would need a partnership to be able to do and accomplish. So that makes me feel a little bit more comfortable about that situation. I. The separate question, though somewhat related, there's concerns about the lead levels in that area. Recently, the EPA did a. Study on a very close county property. And it was well above what the EPA anticipated, which was already well above what it should be at, so. Is there a plan on that, especially around the affordable housing units to assure that those levels will be appropriate and will have an appropriate. Address without it impacting people downstream, yeah.
We did a study in our due diligence for a lot of the property, had CTO come to do it. Of course, the eight acres up there, it's the IM. I'm not speaking of that, that's. But the thirty six acres. Pretty much all of it was. Could be brought back to reasonable seven foot levels with six inch from the top floor. Either covered in concrete or six inch top floor. And we also talked to some of the Colorado Superfund folks, I've got emails from them. Where we were also looking at the more more there than the old man minds, feel like we've got a decent handle. On that, there's there's a few, but. Not as many as we thought, but we realized we had to deal with our house.
Yeah, top top soil land coverage of both remediation. What is your thought about the EPA right now, the level in Leadville Lake County is thirty five hundred? You know, which is a huge, a very high number, their EPA is talking about dropping that number dramatically, possibly to two hundred and fifty. Does that affect your thought process around lead? Residential lead funding?
It could very much so, yes.
I I don't know, the rhetorical question, I mean, you may not know either, we don't know if the EPA is going to do that, we've heard they are. And we haven't also haven't heard when they're going to do it, so. Anyway, just a thought, you know.
And Chris, if you're online with us, are you able to add anything regarding this site or similar processes you've been through on like minded sites?
Uh, yes, I I sure can, Chris Durle with Tetra Tech. So we have done some preliminary investigation work across the site. There were several locations that were even above the four hundred parts per million threshold, we were. We were reviewing, you know, thirty five hundred is pretty high, we're we're used to looking at soul conditions that are more like four hundred parts per million. I hadn't heard that they were looking at maybe lowering it to two fifty, but that was kind of the threshold we used. So we are expecting some remediation on the site. That we do need to do some more profiling across the site that we would do with the preliminary submittal process. Kind of in conjunction with the geotechnical report as well and look at areas that might need remediation. We're we've done a lot of materials management plans. One of the engineers on staff at Tetra Tech in our golden office, Darryl Longwell, he's worked for. With a Sarko on the California Gulch. Superfund site, he's also done some work with the EPA, including remediation of some materials removed at East Seventh Street. And the East Fifth Street area a few years back, so he's pretty familiar with the soil conditions in this area. You know, some of our options that we're going to look at is we do have some anticipated. Fill areas along the new roadway where we could actually place some of that material, bury it below the roadway prism. We've also worked on some projects in a recent project in the central city area. A multifamily housing project where we were able to bury a lot of that on the parking lot. And also beneath the the larger multifamily buildings as well, so those are some of the strategies we're going to look at in detail a lot more. Once we get into the preliminary design phase.
And so for the council, I have the staff report prepared by Lake County when this application was submitted for subdivision to Lake County. And that did include comments from Power Department of Natural Resources, Division of Reclamation, Mining and Safety. And CDPHE is part of the Department of Public Health and Environment, so I have that staff report and then I have individual like excerpts from that, the comments that I can provide at the council tonight too.
Be good.
All right, let's keep going.
All right. Additional. Additionally, we want to touch base on trails and offsite connection. Circuit types providing trail options more so than just a trail, we understand. That's not only a big part of the lifestyle, but this is a pretty critical site. In terms of what it's used for today and how you access additional recreational land. So what we've done is part of this preliminary planning is we've identified. What current trails are used today, those are shown in dashed to the left of the page, the mineral belt and the dark green. As well as in the light green offsite footpaths. And so what we're doing from a trails perspective is prioritizing connections through our site to those trails to make sure that the. Recreation opportunity from the city through our site stays intact. And so to complement that, we're providing a. Primary trail as an extension of twelfth street, that that would be part of the twelfth street improvement and we will have that. Extend directly through the site to provide direct access to these kind of recreation. Trails that are offsite, understanding that that would require adjacent landowner and county coordination. Additionally, we would supplement that with a north south. Trail that follows an existing, what what feels like an abandoned rail line or cart line that's that's. Cuts through the site in half, we want to make sure that that currently used recreational. Alleyway maintains a part of this city infrastructure, so we're going to respond to that, that's this from left to right on the page, the golden line. We want to make sure that that still feels like a nature trail and still allows allows people to get through this site and then connect back to town or over to the mineral belt. Trail, and so you can see some of the typologies, different trail types we would expect to have. In this development. Apologies, bear with me one moment. So understanding the mineral belt trail is. A paved trail, we want to make sure we're providing pretty reasonable foot traffic. Sorry about that. Understanding the mineral belt trail is. A paved trail, we want to make sure we're providing reasonable foot traffic to that. Through the form of a primary paved trail. And supplementing that with additional what we're calling secondary and tertiary footpath trails, secondary. It could be paved, it could be unpaved, but the the priority is less about. Crossing through the site very quickly and more about a recreational opportunity. And tertiary trails, just minor footpaths, just to provide additional connection points for. Increased opportunity to get through this site on foot or by bike. And we we see this as a benefit to. The city residents, county residents, as well as the future homeowners of this site, we understand that trails and recreation is. The lifestyle here is just a selling point of. These communities, so we want to make sure that we are. Preserving that and. Adding to that where possible.
Could you speak to the open space, open space tracks that are shown in gray?
Yes, so aside from. The residential lots, this identifies just additional green space parcels, none of these are. Parks per se, this is just additional. Green space, whether that's detention or. Trail access, probably the most significant is the significant one is that we want to make sure that this twelfth street terminates. On the open space, not the. Not a home site, so a pedestrian user coming through twelfth street will have the opportunity to just. Go through a landscape tract to connect to multiple trail options.
So to expand on that a little bit, Chapin, and to may further answer your question, the common open space that's shown on this is usually serving one of several purposes. One of the purposes maybe it's it's an area of the property that's so visible to the public realm that we desire not to have home sites on it. So it might be a term of view, you don't want a lot of headlights facing of the home, we don't want, we don't want to put home sites on the visible terminus of some of these roads. Others are serving as access points for trailheads, either intentionally or unintentionally into some of these existing soft surface trails and 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 tracks. To be planned or. And and others do have detention function, so that that's a lot of what you're seeing in there is picking up on like these components of open spaces. The other thing that. We put out there before, we actually had it on the plan when we were talking with the county, interestingly enough, they asked us to remove it was the notion of having a trailhead. Located off of CR three where we would have literally a trailhead, weight finding signage, maybe even a little small parking area. Again, if the intent is for people to use us, which we love the idea, we encourage, we'd rather have safe places for people to park and not on the side of the county road. And we're open to that, we promote all that and support all that. If if it's something we can work with the city directly or with the city and county as a joint, we're still open to that. It was anyway, it was a concern about the access to trails from the county's perspective that had us take it off the plan, but the lead bill team would still be open to that if that is something that the city would desire.
Understood, thank you.
One question I had, I know you all met with early on a subgroup of the. Housing Coalition and had talked to them, has this. I know you guys came to some agreement or were working on coming to an agreement. And I know this was a big sticking point for them, as a disclaimer, I were supporting them while you guys were in the county. I've since not really connected with them, so I kind of want to get a perspective of how that's gone or how this plays into some of their concerns they may have shared with y'all.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, over time, the interaction we have with that group has certainly changed, if we go roll the same way back in time, this was sixty one. Single family lots, there wasn't any discussion about higher density, single family or attached housing, let alone affordable housing.
Right.
So that conversation certainly has shifted over time. In between when we were, you know, working with the county and. And even the ten minute presentation, there's been some email conversations, we've kept a pretty high level because we want to really get through tonight's conversation. And ultimately understand where the project's heading, but we feel like we're ultimately heading to landing. In a camp of, we're hopefully hitting the intent of a number of their goals, but also meeting the realities of some of the. Development hurdles that have to happen in order to make a project like this work in pencil and be successful, so we're we're honestly very. Excited about the opportunity to have what ultimately is around a hundred units, that could be market rate that have a variety of of. Size and scale to the home itself, to the lots themselves, one of the things I actually want to ask this group is, where does the city stand currently on accessory dwelling limits in eighty years, is that something you have in place or interested in?
Used by right, yeah, accessory dwelling units are used by right, most of our our zones, including the like R R one, R two zone. There are limitations to accessory growing, it's like we have dimensional standards for them. And there's a maximum of one unit per lot, per yeah, per lot and an accessory dwelling unit counts as a unit of density.
Yep, okay, and and I ask that because again, that it helps both inform the. Design location of the lots as well as the home design themselves and from a practical standpoint from the user side, you know, it's another option to have a place to live without having to commit to. A whole, you know, whole buying a whole lot. It's something that is certainly. Helping us change how we plan and how architects design for a variety of users within communities even of this scale.
I can't. Oh, Dana, please.
Hi, good evening. I have more of a meta question that's somewhat. Related to what council member Luna Leal brought up. The last time that Leadville seven presented to. City Council, I was surprised to hear that you had actually been working with the city for the prior, or excuse me, the county for the prior two years. And I'm interested to hear why Leadville seven. Broke off the. Arrangements or the discussion with the county and came to the city requesting annexation.
That was a suggestion of. I got a little, let me back up, when we first started out, correct me if I'm wrong. Chapin was not on board, there was not a person in his role on the city level. Started out almost two years ago. And so we started working through the county under a buy right. Process. And after our first submittal and some conversations with Ann Snyder. She informed us that. The city now had taken on board a planning role and that we might want to revisit the annexation. Besides, that's really how we are.
So that would make it easier for you guys to move forward. With having a planning director in the city now.
I think there's. Yeah, no, no, I was wondering why. Yeah, no, no, I was wondering why benefits to you. There's a couple of benefits. One is not on this project, but in some instances. Annexation is desirable from a utility standpoint. Okay, that that's not really a player. There's locational advantages to being within a city from a business standpoint of developing, building and selling homes. People like the idea of being within the city of Leadville. Being within the county may be less desirable. So there's advantages to that. There are advantages to trying to work with the city on some of their goals because a lot of our goals. Are hopefully aligned in what you're looking to do within your community with what Bob's team is trying to do with. Adding on hopefully to that community, um providing a variety of housing, access to trails. Working in more of a collaborative process, um often times we find the city more. Interested in pursuing some some approaches that may be unconventional, um that can be sought through a PUD. So those are some of the reasons that we've shifted from the county, but also I think a desire to um address where the. Honestly, where the county was with some of their own staff issues. They weren't, yeah, and the timeline just wasn't work.
I mean, Mary, if you remember our very first meeting with you very preliminarily, uh before we met with Ann. I think we we voiced, you know, the possibility of pursuing viable organization. Uh but it just, uh I don't think there was necessarily the appetite for it at that time or even the interest.
Here's what I said. I remember clearly. I said, I don't know if we're interested or not. However, we would only be interested if the county was on board with it being in the best interest of the community. That's that's been my take.
And and that's, that is exactly what you said. And I guess you felt like through a culmination of things. Working with them and then Ann's suggestion. Taking coming back on board. Yes, it does give us. Possibly a little bit more flexibility. Uh. But then again, you know, in some respects, it does, you know, the. All the county was asking for was that we did restrict some lines. They weren't really asking for affordable housing. And so, you know, now we've gone out and found a partner in Kelly that's. You know, willing to pursue the affordable housing piece for us. And uh and we're excited about that partnership. It's been kind of a. A molding of working through the process. I don't know that it's really an answer of. Oh wow, this will go faster than this or this will go faster than that, you know, uh or easier. Um it's just at the end of the day, we want to be a good partner with the city and bring a development that works for all of us.
And Councilmember Green, just to further your answer to your question, the the uh cities, uh some of our zoning districts, R one, R two. Um do you allow smaller lot sizes, lot widths, uh setbacks and lot coverage? Than the county's um urban residential zoning? So there there are potentially some of, we we haven't, you know, done a four of you have these four conversations yet. But there are um some probably advantages to the developer's side from uh from the city zoning in terms of the dimensional standards. Under the zoning ordinance.
Let me ask you this, Chip. If we went through an annexation, what would the underlying zone be?
Well, we have to determine that.
So then that's. You first.
That's petition and decision by the city council.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I I understand that.
Okay.
You know, yeah, but we made a mistake during the annexation of the red cards and we were told. And it turned out to be wrong that we should make the underlying zoning commercial. And that was the, that was a bad decision. That's why I'm asking, you know.
Well, the commercial forces the PUD because if 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 you if you apply to commercial zoning designation, then the residential development does not happen without a PUD. So that forces the developer to a PUD. If you apply in, you know, an R one zoning district, for example. That allows much smaller lot sizes than R uh or allow allows requires much larger lot sizes than R two, so less less development. So if you apply to R one, that could incentivize the developer to um to seek a PUD, which would be concurrent.
PUD, this is what we were told, you know, legally, is that the underlying zoning still drives density.
Yes, it does. And the P the PUD uh basically can take all of that density and concentrate it in one area. So that you're not exceeding the allowed density within the total development boundary, but you're exceeding it on a per lot basis or or within within that. Smaller.
Well, that's why I was asking you. I don't know which the right direction is to go with this. I just know that the density issue came back to bite us and uh and I'd rather not see that again.
The zoning assignment would be, it's not that it's irrelevant, but I see that as the next step of this discussion, the zoning assignment.
What, and Chip, one of the things we could certainly entertain was because of the multifamily component, we may have a couple of different underlying zoning. Zones on this property, just to that point, right? So that we're we're, we don't do it like a PUD. And then you don't feel like you have the control over time of this, that we understand this is the expectation for that triangle parcel and that the rest of this.
It's a calculation, you know, uh whether it's nine units per acre, which is which commercial was or nineteen units per acre, which. Which R one is, I, you know, so.
So we're kind of, Chip, we're about halfway through the.
Yeah, I think the idea is aligning goals. So you you'll have a density goal. Though we'll have a good density goal together, you're gonna come through with the possibility.
Thank you.
But just to be clear, you can have different zoning within the same development.
Technically, you could, yeah. The annexation doesn't have to apply just one zoning. And so that sounds like it transitions uh pretty well to the next topic of. Uh integrated housing types. One of the comments we've had previously was that the. Uh distribution of density looked pretty bunched up. So the question was, why are all the larger lots up on the hillside? Why are all the smaller lots bunched up? And we did revisit that. And we reviewed the upper hillside lots and. We took a really close look at how a lot of those lots have uh ten, fourteen, even eighteen feet of grade fall. Across where we would expect to see a buildable pad and. That's part of what was driving these fifty, sixty, sixty-five foot lots, um just to be able to work with that grade change. Either uh in a a walkout scenario or if it's a longer rather than deeper home, uh we. To keep these viable lots, we do think that the uh larger, the uphill lots need to be in that fifty foot plus range. Whereas the uh lots to the bottom-left cul-de-sacs that are more in the fifty-foot range. Or the PA two, PA three, uh which are flat, tho- those have the most flexibility for. Uh not only lot sizes, but also product type. Where we're down on that flatter two-way, PA two, PA three part. So it's really the hillside and the vegetation. That's driving the uh fifty, sixty, maybe seventy-foot lots up on the on the hillside.
Yeah, and then so the the dots that you're seeing on screen, each color corresponds to those images in the bottom. And so really what we're kind of talking about is four typologies of housing within this community. From left being kind of your traditional front-loaded fifty, sixty, seventy-foot wide lot. To something more in the higher-density, single-family, typically an alley road, thirty-five, forty-foot wide lot. To something like a duplex, right? So it's mass or to residential architecture typically wants to be on flatter terrain. But there are locations even on the upper part of plan, the left side of plan with existing topography. And the likely engineered topography would support the opportunity to do duplexes within the current lot configuration. And then obviously we're talking about affordable housing as for the multifamily approach. One of the things that the the ADU conversation can change will certainly affect both this second image, the high-density. Housing, but will also impact the design layout and even lot dimensions for the traditional home. Uh so we can, we can play with that a little bit more and continue to work with. You know, Chapin and everyone on finding the right mix, but it's really trying to blend what worked from the site as it is today. What do we know is going to work from the builder's standpoint in making a project with? Again, let's take up the affordable housing. Around a hundred homes, you're gonna be looking at three, at most four housing types. Three to four floor plans within each of those and two to three elevation styles. That's the type of mix that I would expect to see that pencils from the builder's standpoint in this environment.
Joe, multiple builders, will you have uh covenants that that dictate? You know, the design, the 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 rough, rough design guidelines? Okay, thank you.
If there was a PUD, that can be incorporated into the PUD standards also.
Yeah, and and the the final number of builders, obviously, we don't know that right now. It could vary. We could have one take down each of those segments. You could have one come in and takes down. Few or all of them. Or you could have multiple builders that want to play in in one or multiple arenas, right? So we're pretty flexible, but we we fully expect design guidelines will guide that vision.
Thank you.
Does, as Brian pointed out, a a big component of this is the potential duplexes. Everywhere there's an orange dot, that's an opportunity to. Utilize duplexes to uh change a price point, a density, but still keep the neighborhood form. Uh architecturally speaking. So that's where we see that opportunity scattered throughout the site with the orange dots. With about twenty minutes remaining, I'm gonna suggest to start moving to deal points. Okay?
Mayor Dana, as they're handed.
Dana, yes, please. Go ahead.
Um just a quick question because you brought up architectural design, but. Um Leadville Seven has has repeatedly said how flexible they are and how willing to work with the city. Um I'm just, you know, one of our, as you pointed out, one of our main interests is. Affordable and available housing, uh but that is not the only interest of the city. I would say that a neighborhood that fits in with the rest of Leadville is also important. Um and so how flexible are some of these architectural designs? Because I would say at least the examples that are on this packet that you've handed out really do not fit in with the current architecture. Of Leadville. And while I do think it's it's difficult to. To design apartment complexes. It's hard for me to get away from the distinct feeling of an Eastern Bloc apartment complex on here. No offense to the architectural. Individual.
No, it's a good point. In in terms of architectural design and character, and Joe, please chime in too. We haven't gotten to that level of discussion. We ultimately, you know, we understand the kind of the history of mountain architecture. You know, there's a lot of traditional styles up to it, including things like Victorian, which you don't see done in a lot of the modern build. But ironically, we're actually seeing it come back in the front range. We're totally open to a variety of design styles. We a hundred percent agree this needs to fit. Within the existing community character. That's what we would push for in the guidelines. We, while the images show things that are a little bit more contemporary expressions, more intended to demonstrate the scale and massing of the architecture than it is. The details of the design itself, but certainly appreciate that. Timeout the multifamily because that's a whole different.
I'll just reiterate, the the intent of this image, these images is to to. Express the scale, not necessarily the what the design intent is to look like. It's not a technology, not a kind of design statement. So.
But is that generally a broader consensus of more of that kind of traditional style versus anything that's pushing into contemporary or a blend of? Or where do folks, we're open?
To me, what Leadville's style is, is is a real quagmire. Uh is it, is it mining? Is it Victorian? Is it Western? You know, what is it? Uh. I I have a real hard time putting my finger on it, but uh it needs to have. Uh let let's say in terms of of roof pitches and 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 front entrances and and some other. Design guidelines that that are part of our city, uh that we have to pay attention to that.
Yeah, and a lot of times we'll refer to that as mountain contextual, so because it means a lot, right? There's a lot of architecture variety in this space on the history of all these communities. So we'll put it in the context of Leadville. Will be different than Aspen will be different for breakfast, right? We understand that. So we'll we'll. Continue to share that vision through, we'll start with image boards and then we'll develop into schematic design and design guidelines and all that, but very open.
Is that something that maybe HPC would want to um bring up with? With this group?
They can bring it up. They don't have any authority, you know, in terms of that area. However, there is a discussion within HPC and we've discussed in the city council, should we have designed guidelines in the city for infill? Which, you know, currently we do not.
But certainly the team could look at the historic preservation guidelines. We do have four residential infill within the historic district and pull things from that.
But I think that might be a good focal point uh to get to design guidelines and get that to the Department of Superior approves.
Thank you for that discussion.
Uh Chapin, you mentioned uh deal points. Uh one of the biggest ones is we do want to address. The initial studies we've done for uh tenable housing. What we've done is a site plan study. Targeting sixty multifamily units. Uh on this PA one site. And um Joe, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it over to you to just talk about. Where we are right now and where we think this can go in terms of affordable housing and what uh. What you and Kelly at Design.
Well, these sixty units are light, this is a light tech project, right?
This is a light tech.
So this is the way to come with.
It it'll be, I'm gonna defer to Kelly in a moment, but.
Okay.
Um because he has the uh best best description of this. Um but we're showing sixty as a maximum build-out. The numbers are gonna dictate what is actually developable, right? So we're really targeting between forty and sixty units depending on how it all pencils out. Based on the tax credits and various other uh awards and and how it all comes together as a project. So that's the goal. Um Kelly, do you wanna chip in and and just kind of? Uh explain how you're building your pro forma?
Yeah, sure. I can uh give a little bit of commentary here. And obviously, we've spent about forty-six minutes on density and architectural design. So not sure if the affordability is the priority here. Um since we're left fourteen minutes for it, but in any event, um. If I, my understanding is the city's looking to target sixty, eighty percent AMI. So yeah, certainly it would lend itself more to a light tech execution. Um you know, and I'm just basing this off other projects we've worked on, partners of mine that just finished up a project over in uh Winter Park. Um you know, it's expensive to do development like this today with interest rates where they are, with construction costs where they are. So again, if the city's goal is to maintain rents at eighty percent or below, it it. Would have to be a light tech execution. You're not gonna be able to do a market rate deal, particularly with the AMI rents that are. Um uh posted for Lake County. So what we, so with that assumption, we try to back into a pro forma. Um with CHAFA that uh their maximum light tech award is one million, four hundred and fifty thousand. Um and I'm not, again, we only have about thirteen minutes now, so I'm gonna try to give you very highlights of how this works. Uh you have to go competitively apply for the tax credits with CHAFA. To get that equity to help, you know, build your capital stack to make the project pencil. Um I think uh Lake County um and Leadville is positioned well for. Uh on a tax credit approval through CHAFA because I think the last time there was one done was in twenty thirteen maybe. And it was an Acc Rehab deal. So um as competitive these credits are with the state of Colorado. Um I think there would be a good opportunity. There's no guarantee. I think the the main concern is that uh if you're gonna go on for an allocation of credits, their. Process basically begins the first week of this December. So I don't know if that's a realistic uh timeframe to meet that um. Meet that objective or if it's something that would have to pencil it's next year. But long story short, you know, our company has developed over. Uh fifteen hundred units of affordable housing throughout five or six states. We have a lot of projects in the pipeline. Um you know, I think we can figure out how to make a deal pencil here. It would take obviously support. From the city and the the local housing authority. Um I can tell you, uh again, just to give you a real-time um example of what uh my partners did in Winter Park. City Winter Park donated the land, gave property tax exemption, sales tax exemption. They also are funding, I think, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars a year from a county sales tax to help underwrite AMI rents. Um and I think they also got tap and sewer fee waivers. And even with all those incentives prior to the cost escalations of. Um COVID, uh they were only able to get rents in the eighty to a hundred twenty, twenty percent AMI range. So I'm just saying, if we pursue this, it's gonna take, it's a heavy lift and everybody has to come to the table, something to help. Make this deal underwrite and um. You know, we're willing to pick up the challenge and make it happen, but it's something that has to be a a priority. And something where everybody's uh contributing to make the deal work. So. Um that's kind of my two cents worth and I'm, I'd be happy to answer any questions or. That's kinda my two cents worth and I'm, I'd be happy to answer any questions or respond any comments anybody has.
Kelly, this is Mayor Lobby. Um, uh, have you done a light check with Chaffa before?
No, we have not.
Okay, I'm assuming you're, you're, um, uh, contemplating the nine percent light tech request, because you said it's competitive, right?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, and the four percent's competitive too, and the only way a four percent deal will work is if you're in a.
Um, so then the other thing is, uh, you know, a nine percent light check, it's my understanding that they require. At least a certain percentage of that program be sixty percent, um, AMI, so.
Correct.
Okay, all right, that, that's all for me. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and mayor to that, to that extent, and I think that came up earlier, in this case, because it's a point, it's, it's a point, um. System to get your approval, we would be looking at probably like forty percent. To eighty percent AMI doing an average income, uh, type situation. You get more points for the deeper skewed rents you do. Um, and I'm not necessarily opposed to that. We're doing that in a lot of projects. We're doing around the country, uh, primarily. You, you cast a wider net to folks living in your community. So you can, you know, um, and in fact, you get points for market rate units, so we could do a mixed income deal. Everything really kind of backs into the, what is it gonna cost to build this project and what is the cost of borrowing money? And right now that's a. Yeah, it's a moving target right now, so.
Chaffa, Chaffa encourages mixed use within a light tech project. Uh, for different, different versions of that, but you could actually do a certain percentage of market rate to try and.
You bet, absolutely. Yeah, you get points for that too. I think twenty percent. To do twenty percent market rate and that, and that, and we, those projects are the most successful ones we have. Again. We can cast a wider net, the communities we, uh, invest in. Uh, to get somebody making maybe forty percent AMI, you know, maybe somebody that's working at the local grocery store all the way up to. You know, a senior that's wanting to sell their home to a younger family and move into a place that's a little bit more maintained. So I think it's a, it's a good execution and. Um, there's a lot more details we gotta go through and, and, and iterations of performance, but yeah, you're exactly right.
We're kind of running out of time. I would just say as in closing that Chap has been encouraging Lake County to, to come forward. With, with a nine percent wide application. They want us to have that. I don't much care who does it first.
Yeah, no, I, I would agree with you. I think, uh, the, the county, we, we ran it through Chaffa's pro forma and their scoring, uh, system. And it scores well, um. You know, again, there's a lot of details we have to work through. We, we can execute quickly. Um, I just, you know, with the, their LOIs due in December, uh, I think the first week of December, there's a few things we'd have to work through. Um, not, not a heavy lift, but just. I know when you're dealing with public bodies like, uh, like a city council or city commission and a housing authority. There's certain board actions that have to be taken, but. Frankly, you know, Colorado, we've done projects in Iowa, Oklahoma, Kansas. So we're working on a project, Nessus Park, Iowa.
Uh, oh, and we have to get back to the deal points. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
List both on the screen. If, if you'll stop sharing, I can, I can share. Um, so I'm just gonna just try to wrap this up and, and get us focused here. So I have a list. That I've prepared, uh, for, that we can edit tonight, so when we leave this, we're all on the same page. Um, so.
Can you break that a little?
Yeah, so in order for, in order for.
I'm gonna say before he else does.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, what the developer is proposing, so I've just copied and pasted basically the, the unit mix, the AMIs, number of units, et cetera. And then I have public trails and open space, uh, and that, you know, there's details of that would have to be discussed. Um, I'm also, so these bottom three are staff recommendations, uh, for consideration for discussion. Um, the, basically, we, we wouldn't wanna make sure that this, if we were annexing this, that it could pass a subdivision approval. So that would include, you know, environmental remediation, all the referral agencies, all those things, so. Uh, I'm saying prior to the annexation documents actually being recorded, they would actually pass a subdivision permit process. Um, this, this, this last one, this is really no skin off the developer's back and it's a substantial benefit for the city. Others, cities will do a one percent real estate transfer assessment, so as the, as these lots sell in the future. That, uh, that, uh, the city or the regional housing authority gets a financial benefit. So one percent on a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar home. That'd be seventy-five hundred dollars per lot or per, per unit. So that could be, that could be substantial. And then I just added design standards in, because I picked that up tonight. Uh, I'm gonna stop there and I'm gonna open this up for discussion.
I guess going back to the affordable housing stuff, uh, I know it's a really complicated and touchy subject. And I imagine that you would probably want to work with the Leadville Lake County Regional Housing Authority rather than the Leadville Housing Authority. Uh, just because that's kind of what it's set up to take on while our Leadville Housing Authority is kind of. Picking itself back up, um, and establishing its future roles and, um, adding new members. Um, and I'm more than happy to kind of discuss that at those meetings rather than here. Um, but just wanted to throw that out there. And as a disclaimer, we have two, uh, sitting members present on the chair and, and a hill is also a chair member.
Regional housing authority is the only way to go. The, the local housing authority, there's only one functionality, that's to take care of the, the, the mayor, and that's it. So they don't have any other capability.
Yes, and that's, uh, is Jackie.
Jackie's the ED, yeah.
That is, that, that was our intent. I misspoke when I said Leadville Housing Authority. The regional housing authority is who we've been, uh, working with.
Just to have the first one, under community housing, the construction sixty D restricted, just even based on what Kelly was outlining. Some of this already hit the points, maybe market rate, and so it may not be sixty. Plus, Joe, you were talking about some other things that may impact total you.
Right.
As, as we work through our pro forma, it might not quite hit sixty, uh, units total. So, but we'll be completely open book and, and show you why, why it pencils and what we can get to.
Is there some other numeric threshold you'd be willing to commit to, other than if it was, was a number of units? Are we comfortable with the forty to sixty range as, as a target?
If, I think, I mean, I can't speak to the developer, needs to speak to it, so Kelly.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, the, and again, unfortunately, you know, these agencies say they don't want you chasing points. But you have to chase points to get your allocation and Chaff has no, not unlike. Many other housing agencies that award these credits. So I think there, what I, what I would foresee here is we're looking at three percent AMI. All the way up to potentially market rate units. And what that ultimately breaks down to on a percentage basis is. I think everything will trend more towards this sixty percent AMI and maybe some eighties in market, so. It's hard to like break it down right now without having all the, all the data, but, um. Again, just from a global standpoint, what I like to do is cast a wide net. Into communities, smaller communities where we do this, because like we're doing in, uh, Lexington, Nebraska. We have thirty to, to market rate units and we're be, we're able to rent our project, we're able to rent our units to. A, a, a big spectrum of folks that are contributing to the local economy, so. Um, so yeah, I would say it's gonna be thirty to eighty percent, maybe even some market rate, but. Without, you know, really digging into more details, it's hard to nail that down.
Yeah, wait, I don't think Chaffer contemplates lower than sixty. I think when you get below sixty, you're starting to get into the, to the homeless issues. And, uh, the, I don't think they, uh, they, they would allow that if you have a, a plan in place. For homelessness that is much more complicated than just a housing development, so. I, it's, but my opinion that you, you, you probably don't wanna go down that road right now.
Thank you.
Uh, let me quickly, this looks good to me to continue on with.
It got my attention.
So I think we talked about the, uh, AMI, correct? So Chaping, are you, are you updating that as we're discussing it?
Well, uh, I mean, I'm hearing that this is proposed as a light tech project, uh, but there's some understanding that. You cannot go that low with your AMI. I'm not an expert on light tech. Uh, so is, is that something that you want me to change on the screen right now, something we're agreeing upon? I think it sounds like. You know, if, if we're talking about a light tech project, we need to have some checkpoints within an annexation agreement where the developer is. Is demonstrate, you know, providing reasonable demonstration that this, that the, the light tech project will be successful.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I mean, I think that was it. I, what I wanted to say is if we're. Finished talking about the bullet point of AMI, I'm still having a hard time reading that. The bullet point above it is the percentage of units, correct?
Yeah, this, this is what is on, on the plan right now.
So I just wanted to say, is that, uh, is that still an accurate statement? You're willing to say thirty-eight percent of the units at sixty-eight percent AMI?
Well, if we achieve the sixty.
Yeah, we, we talk about sixty, eighty, a hundred market rate. You know, it, it needs to be a variety. Of different AMIs, so that, that would be.
I understand, but thirty, I mean, we're just saying thirty-eight percent of units somewhere in sixty to eighty percent AMI.
If we're able to achieve the sixty, so.
And that's where the forty to sixty.
Yeah, we should give a range is probably the better.
Trying to get at.
Yeah.
So these are.
We're trying to be transparent. We're not trying to.
What we're trying to. Pin down tonight are some, some of the deal points. So if those aren't agreeable deal points, then we, we could probably. Have Chaping adjust it to what, what you're saying your range is.
That's, I think we also gonna need to hear back from Kelly. You know, once, once he has a better idea of what is possible in terms of penciling out the project.
Correct, and this is, and this is complimenting when you say the deal point is phase one, that it would be constructed in phase one.
So, yes, so we just did a quick number. If it were only forty units, not sixty. It would be twenty-five percent. So if we gave a range twenty-five to thirty-eight percent. You know, at least then we'd have that opportunity to, to say.
Or we could say construction of forty to sixty D restricted. And so that we're clear on what we're, no, Chaping leave that the way it was.
Right.
And then go up to see where it says sixty, say, so you're, you're contemplating if, if it doesn't pencil out at sixty, you're gonna go to forty and then your range starts at twenty-five.
And this is how finally decided tonight, but this is how we would proceed.
You have to be a little bit careful about the wording, because it says D restricted multifamily units. And, and if you, when you're on a light tech, there's a, there's a, there's, there's studios, there are one bedrooms, there are two bedrooms or three bedrooms. A light tech project isn't one thing, so you gotta be careful about how you.
Yeah, there, there, there's a lot of variables that, I mean. And believe me, we, we've been working with. The town of Estes Park for four years on AMIs and. Through that process, you know, with construction costs and interest rate, I mean, so I don't think we're gonna be able to nail that down tonight. I think. One of the things that if we're gonna go for a competitive nine percent application. Again, it's all about, you have to look at Chaff as scoring. They're gonna give you points for certain things that your, your projects willing to do. And it's like twenty percent market rate units. It's like you get more points for lower skewed AMIs. So it's, it's becomes a calculus problem that we're not gonna be able to solve tonight. But I think kind of more, again, from the thirty thousand foot view, if you say conceptually. The city of Leadville is okay with pursuing a light tech application. Let's get some more details. On what makes a competitive application, given the current market conditions and the market demand in the, in the county. Yeah, then we can go from there.
Also, they're not D restricted. Uh, light techs cannot be D restricted. Because they're rentals.
Right.
And what, what, what we would do, uh, because you also get points for like doing ex, extended use period. On the, uh, land use restriction, so obviously if the, the, the regional or the county housing authority or the local housing authorities are a participant. The way we would structure this is we would do, you know, like a, if tax credits go for fifteen years, we would do probably another thirty years beyond that. And then once the compliance period of fifteen years is up. The property would be deeded over to the, the housing authority or regional housing authority, so they could put that asset on their books. And we've done this with a lot of nonprofits and, and housing authorities. Yeah, we're not, we, we look at these more as, uh. Community development effort. We do, we do a lot of these projects with nonprofits and my goal is, I'm, like I always say is. You know, I, I wanna, I wanna empower the nonprofit or the housing authority to put an asset on their books. We're, we're gonna come in, do the guarantees to get a construction loan done. We'll make the developer fee, but long term, the asset goes on the books. The county housing authority or the local housing authority, so in perpetuity, they can own the asset. And continue to achieve the mission that we originally set out to do.
Kelly, thank you. Dana, you have something?
Yeah, just quickly, uh, you just mentioned that, uh, you've worked with Estes Park. On some affordable housing issues. Is that with, uh, through the. Organization of Leadville Seven, or is that a separate?
That, that's a separate project that. We, we've been working with Estes Park for about five years. That's why I'm a little reluctant on some of these, because. Time kills deals. Uh, we, we responded to an RFP. About five years ago, four and a half years ago, and rewarded that when interest rates were great and construction costs were great. But then they went through a, an administrative change that tabled. That RFP, then they reissued one two years ago that I reluctantly responded to that we. Were awarded and we're still negotiating today while interest rates have doubled in construction. So time is not friendly to these deals, particularly now, so if. And that's, again, we, we have multiple projects we're working on around the country. I'm not saying this to be kind of a, a hard ass, but it's like. You know, everybody's gotta be committed, roll up the sleeves, and we gotta move forward, get these deals done. We're, we're not, I'm not gonna. My company and my investors, we can't spend five or six years trying to figure out how to do a forty unit deal. In Leadville. If you guys are committed and you want a project like this to happen, we will. Deploy the, our forces to make this happen, but I'm not gonna go through another four or five year Estes Park deal where. We have this wishy-washy back and forth, like, you know, AMI discussions and all this. I mean. Cause it just, it's gonna kill the deal. I, we're, we're, we're teetering on that deal dying. After investing a couple hundred thousand dollars in it, and it's, uh, it's just frustrating, but. And I don't say that again to, to be alarmistic, but I just wanna.
My, my, my question though is, if it's not Leadville Seven, what is the company or the entity that's, uh, worked or attempted to work with Estes Park? That responded to the RFP?
Um, my company consolidated housing solutions and we teamed with a nonprofit called America West out of, um, Colorado Springs. Um, they've done a few light tech deals in Colorado, um, so that was the team that responded that RFP. And, and in this case, we would be partnering with the master developer. Uh, who contacted us to said, you know, we don't do affordable housing, we do more of this other type of development. Would you be willing to? Partner with us to take the affordable housing component and make that happen? And, and of course, Colorado's on our, on a radar screen. You know, um, so we said, yeah, let's, let's figure it out. I know that, you know, so that's, that's why we're here.
All right, we got about three minutes left.
I see the straw pole and then I'll, I can explain next steps.
Straw pole, or whether, are we willing to look at this and go forward? With the consideration for annexation of Leadville Seven, just, just a, a rough idea of what it would say.
Well, I certainly like the affordable. Aspect of. And if the annexing. It does some control. Over that happening? When, um, before that.
Uh, Dana, Tracy, uh, what are your thoughts right now?
Could you put on the webcams?
Uh, my thought is I am less enthusiastic about annexation than I was previously.
Okay, thank you. Tracy?
I'm neutral right now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the, 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 the rough. Uh, preponderance is that we are willing to hear more. That's fair.
I would love for the affordable housing conversation to take more place, especially in the regional housing authority level. So if anyone is really interested in that, I think that's the place to have it rather than fully here. Though I think obviously updates to here would make sense as well.
Yeah, I agree, and I can definitely, uh, the, and this group is already connected with the regional housing authority and that might involve having representatives come to regional housing authority meetings. Yeah. Um, so, uh, if, if I'm hearing that the majority of the council is supportive of continuing this conversation about annexation. Based on the deal points that we've shared on the screen tonight, understanding that a, a lot of these obviously require a lot of refinement. Um, that nobody's time will be wasted necessarily if we take the next, next step based on this understanding, so. Uh, the next step would be, um, the city council, you know, is going to be, uh, buried with budget work sessions, um, between now and the end of the year. The developer does have the opportunity to come to city council meetings, uh, give, during the ten minutes of a lot of time, give presentations and updates on, on. Uh, further work that they will do during this process. At some point, we will need to schedule at an evening meeting, we'll need to schedule an action item for the council to give formal direction to staff. To work with the developer and the city attorney on drafting a draft annexation agreement. A draft annexation agreement is a document that would need to be in place. Once the developer formally petitions through annexation, for annexation. And then the, the city can impose reasonable terms and conditions upon that. And then the, the city can impose reasonable terms and conditions upon that annexation, which is memorialized in the form of an annexation agreement. So they would not begin the annexation, the process, the, the, the city council would not, the next step would not be to direct. The annexation process to begin. It's just to start drafting th, this into a legal document, a draft. So that we're on the same page. And then I can advise based on um, uh, based on direction from the city attorney. I can advise the uh, the group on how to proceed with, with a petition for annexation.
Right. And just, just so we're clear, that, that, the, the step is that, that, you know, the developers have to petition the city. We're not putting the cart before the horse, but we're also making sure that when the petition is submitted, we have the draft document ready, if that makes sense. So we'll, we'll start, if, if that's the consensus, you know, staff will spend the time to start working on that, but really. Then the ball is in the, is the developer's court to do the petition too.
Yeah. One of the deal points could potentially be, cause we're maybe attorneys fees incurred by the city attorney. Um, so we would probably need, at some point when we gave that motion, we would need direction uh, regarding how we, um, how those attorneys fees are, are paid. Are the city paying that? Is the developer paying that? Um, that's it for me.
All right, any last thoughts?
I don't think so.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. It's interesting. Um, we're gonna take a five minute break and then we'll reconvene to go over our budget items. That are on tonight's agenda.